Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 25th meeting of the Carver Planning Board. We call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM if we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of this country, and to the Constitution of the United States, and to the Constitution of the United States
Our first order of business this evening is a public hearing. In accordance with provisions of the Town of Carver zoning by law, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on July 25th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in Carver Town Hall Meeting Room Number One on the application of Jeff Opachinsky, MBO Precast, requesting a site plan review pursuant to sections 2230 and 3100 of the Carver zoning by law for property located at 4 Marion Drive in Carver, Mass., assessors map 21, lot 4-2, in the industrial CIC zoning district. Applicant proposes construction of a 90-foot by 160-foot pole barn on previously developed area at the MBO Precast concrete plant. Any persons interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. All right, do we have anybody here?
Gary Rice from Land Planning in Hanson representing Mr. Opachinsky. I have some rough draft plans of the structure itself. I'm not sure if you have it in your packet. I can hand out to each person.
That would be great, because we only have one sheet.
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 Now, the site is off 4 Marion Road, existing 6.8 acre lot that has, currently has MBO Precast on it. There are two buildings located on the site, which cover about 5.5% of the lots area. And the additional building we're planning to add brings up the coverage up to 10.4%, which is well below the 60% max coverage. We've requested some waivers for the project as the area where the building is going is all concrete and paved. And so there's existing catch basins and a drainage system there now that feeds into that very large drainage basin off to the west side of the project. And we're expecting no additional runoff. The runoff that's going to come off the roof is the same runoff that would be coming off the project without the building there. And then we'd obviously get directly to the catch basins and out to the system. We're asking for a waiver for, first, for lighting waiver, as there's no exterior lighting proposed on the pole barn, no proposed drainage changes, waiver from the vegetation, as the tree line runs along the east lot line and will not be disturbed or altered. There's no signs proposed on the building, no changes in the current open space, no traffic changes, and also due to the area of the construction being paved, no soil will be disturbed. There's 61 feet between the existing building and the proposed building. And on the west side, there's about, and I didn't have it labeled, there's about 40 foot from the edge of the pads to the proposed building corner. There's plenty of access to get around the building for a fire truck or any loading trucks is what they use there, the semi-trucks. The barn itself is going to be used for storage for the steel forms that he uses for making up the catch basins, retaining walls, et cetera. They're all scattered around the lot right now. Due to the weather conditions and the rain, they get beat up pretty bad, so you'd like to have them undercover. The sides, as you can see in the sketch, are all open, as you can get forklifts in and out of the sides. I spoke to the fire department about it, and they said they actually have one of these buildings, and they saw no problem with it. If there's any questions, I'd help you.
I'm unsure what a proposed pole barn is.
It's just a structure with a roof on it. All it has is... Mr. Opachinsky, would you identify yourself? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Jeff Opachinsky, I'm the owner of MBO Precast. And basically, all it is is upright steel to a roof, and that's it. And it's, I think, the spacing are 24, 25 feet between each pier that goes up. And basically, it's just to do what we've been battling for years and years now, since we've been there, is we rotate the forms out of the shop to pour in the tolerances and the rust and everything that's outside. You know, we have to adhere to some serious tolerances for everything that we make. So the forms are very expensive, and it's about the only solution is to keep them out of the weather. And it's just been fighting it for too long, tarps and this and that. So this is my solution to keep everything intact and the longevity of the forms themselves.
Is there anything that animals can get at?
No. No, it's all steel. Every form that we use in that operation is completely steel. Steel doors, steel floors, steel cores, whether we're pouring, you know, catch basin or whatever we make, that every single form is all steel. And that's the reason, pretty much foremost, is the rust and the weather.
It's more like a big picnic pavilion without picnic tables.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Just a big roof.
I kept the height down below the other one, just so we can, I think it's 30 feet at the eaves. Just enough so when we carry and move things in and out of there, we need the height for the forklifts to get in and out. We couldn't do it any lower, because you can't get in. Our doors in the main building are at least 20 feet tall anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The only waiver is in regards to lighting?
There's no power going to it or anything.
Okay. But that's the only waiver?
Well, there's actually waivers.
I don't have a list of the waivers here, so, no, I only have really a map and the fire department, a letter from your neighbor.
Multiple waivers, as if, since it's an existing site and it already has its landscape, shrubbery and drainage, that's the multiple waivers around there for that reason. It's not as if it's on a fresh site.
Okay. Mr. Bott, has Andy Kleins had a chance to review this?
He has not. I sent it to him with the impression that he was not going to have a whole lot to say.
I wouldn't expect, but I would just soon hear.
Considering it's on a previously paved surface, access is from all sides. One of the nice things that things do about this is it takes some of that stormwater and rather than have it sheet flow off the property. The only thing I could consider as a potential ask for something like that is the stormwater that comes off the roof of the building. That's just going to sheet flow to somewhere? Are we piping that to dry wells or something like that, maybe the ground to reduce some of the stormwater flow?
It would run just the way it's running now. There's catch basins on either side that run between the buildings, and it goes both ways.
Gutters, I think. Gutters? Are gutters proposed?
No, no gutters, no.
It's just, like I said, it's essentially taking the parking lot and raising it up, you know, the height of the building.
Try to keep it as simple as I could.
Right. Are you going to be removing part of the parking lot for this gravel area?
No, it's, no.
So is there a gravel area, are you in existence?
Yeah, that's an existing little gravel strip right there.
On both sides of it?
Yeah, it's pavement, little broken up pavement.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to hear back from Andy. My concerns are going to be no working at night in this, because there'll be no lights and there's a safety aspect, and you're going to be using large equipment, forklifts, steel.
Yeah, it's, like I said, mainly for storage and operations on at night. Anything that's manufacturing is usually, it's in the building anyway or up right outside of it. There's no, there's no plan to put lights in there for anything as of now.
And the board will discuss the prohibition against putting siding and closing it on?
Yes, not, no, I understand. Yeah.
All right.
That's why I tried to keep it pretty straightforward.
So, yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. Does the board need a site walk?
Neither of us.
Yeah, please.
So it's already an existing area, so you're not going to have to do any fill in there, you're not have to remove anything out of there. So what I'm saying is, when it rains out right now, there's no puddles in there.
Oh, no. Recycled asphalt on one side of it, and it's all, the only thing you're going to have to disturb is where the footings go, and that's it. And then they backfill that, and then we'll concrete them back in, so that there's really no disturbance of the ground that's already there, stays the same.
Site walk?
Mr. Chair, please. So you mentioned footings. So you're going to set the poles on footings, or are you going to pile drive them?
They'll be dug out and poured footings.
Okay.
I think we have a preliminary design, but that will be for the building department, probably, to, you know, they did all the reactions and everything else.
How many poles are there? How many poles will there be?
How many footings? I think about...
I'm guessing 16? About 15, 16?
Okay. Our engineer might want gutters on it, but I'm not going to speak for that, just to direct the water in a particular orientation in regards to this. But again, we'll wait to hear what he has to say on that. Questions from the board?
Is it a flat roof or?
It's like, it's slight pitch.
It looks to me like it's slightly gabled.
On that first, that drawing, it shows the, it shows it, it's very slight.
So the height at the peak is going to be 30 feet, or is that the height of the ridge?
It was 32, maybe.
Yeah, I think 32 is the number.
Yeah. 32 is what we had on the plan anyway.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's paved and it'll grow off the area of the site anyways, or fairly should be, but I'm more than welcome to do one if anybody feels that it's in their interest. All right. Any further questions from the board?
Yeah, I got one. So I'm reading the fire department recommendations. So it says new road will be required. What are they talking?
I didn't catch that.
New road will be required to be this significant width of the turning radius?
Sufficient. You're not proposing new roads, correct?
No, no.
Again, that's why we want Andy to take a look at it, to make sure that there's sufficient turning and access for the fire department.
Well, they're saying will be required.
Yeah, I'm going to, it's more than they have now, between the two buildings, the two buildings that are existing, it's even further apart. I actually put it 60 feet away from the other building.
Yeah, I think, I think it's referring to, it seems, it seems to me, the way I read it, is if they are constructing a new road, it has to be constructed of an all-weather surface.
There's no road.
Please, Mr. Bott. Yep, and maybe they should have started with any.
All right, because I'm just reading new road to apply.
Right, yeah.
I'll follow up with Andy on that.
Okay.
It looks like there's a word missing.
Yes, okay, thank you. Further questions from the board? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that has any questions or comments? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Jeff Opachinsky, MBO Precast, at 4 Marion Drive in Carver, to August 11?
August 8.
8/8. To August 8th, August 8th, 2023, in Carver Town Hall Meeting Room Number One at 7:00 PM.
I will check back with, I said Andy, but Jesse on his memo and put together a draft decision for that as well. So, because it's so simple, it'd be nice to be able to close something out and move it along.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Motion made by Mr. Gatsky. You look like you have a question, Mr. Dion.
Yeah, I heard site walk, are we going to do a site walk?
Would you like to do a site walk? I'm more than happy to do a site walk.
Sounds so straightforward.
Excuse me?
I think it sounds straightforward, just my opinion.
Well, I heard over there say site walk, that's why I'm...
For any...
Fine by me.
Well, I think we can schedule one for, if you'd like, absolutely. Monday at noon time? Would you be able to give us an idea of where the building is? I know, I know it's not dirt, so you put down some paint markers or cones or something?
Stake up the cones.
Okay, so would you be able to do that by next Monday at noon?
Yeah, that's fine.
Excellent.
So you'll stake the four corners of the pole barn?
Yep. Excellent. All right.
Then I'll second it.
All right, motion seconded by Mr. Dion to continue the public hearing on the application of Jeff Opachinsky, MBO Precast, 4 Marion Drive, to August 8th, Meeting Room Number One, Carver Town Hall, at 7:00 PM. Discussion? Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
Dr. Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Colin Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shay says aye. Thank you, gentlemen, very much, and we'll see you next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you.
What time is that?
At noon time?
I'm fine, I just won't be able to make it.
I'm sure we can make arrangements if you want to come later in the evening or something.
Okay.
It's just going to be the four cones? Mr. Bott, do we have a public hearing notice for... Oh, never mind, I believe I have one here. All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of Beantown Home Services, Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 3100, 5300, 4341, and 2230.C of the Carver zoning by law, located at lot number five, Ricketts Pond Business Park, off Spring Street in Carver, Mass., assessors map 32, lot 1-5. In the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District, the lot will be comprised of approximately 6,621 square foot light industrial building with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic systems, and utility connections.
Good evening, Planning Board members. I'm Eric Shoemaker with Mackenzie Engineering, and I'm representing Beantown Home Services. I'm here with our client, G, and Matt Mitchell, the project attorney. Just to catch the members up on changes to the plan since the last meeting, we revised the utility plan sheet C3 to include a subsurface fire protection cistern. We worked in conjunction with the mechanical and plumbing engineer to size the cistern, and we have it located subsurface underneath the parking lot on the plan. The other change to note was the rotation of the dumpster pad. The dumpster pads were rotated to facilitate the pickup of a 40 cubic yard rolling dumpster, and there's a turning template shown on sheet T2.
This is the cistern dimensions located north of the proposed building.
Show me that again, I'm sorry. Okay, yep. And we've had, Andy or the fire department check on that?
We do have a memorandum from Andy Kleins received today that I believe we've forwarded to you guys this morning.
Yep, received it.
All right, July 25th, all right. And... 15,000 gallons? Is this a full two-story building, or is it partial?
I believe it's a partial two-story building. And we added, I believe, our last response to peer review letter, we mentioned the gross square footage of 10,527 square feet. So I believe that was used to size the cistern by the plumbing engineer, fire protection engineer.
All right, so you beefed up the landscaping out front?
Correct, yep. We added trees and shrubs as requested, and we graded it in a way where it provides a small berm at the front of the site to screen the front of the structure.
Is the berm on the rear of the property on this property, or is it on an adjacent property?
That's on the Morab Trust. It's the adjacent property to the east.
Have you provided fencing along the back of this property?
I believe there's fencing provided adjacent to the loading area at the rear of the lot, and I believe that's in tandem with the row of arborvitae's to provide screening from the rear. But there's a significant berm on that abutting Morab Trust parcel, so we believe we had the site walk a couple weeks ago, and it's pretty clear, you can't see anything pass along.
Right, well, the berm was fantastic, but Andy noted that we can't take it into consideration because it's not part of your property, so we can't consider that as screening for the other property. Can we put a small fence along the parking areas for people pulling in and pulling out? It doesn't have to be like what we would require for trucks along the loading zone area, but maybe like a little three-foot?
Well, actually, Mr. Chair, they did recommend keeping a six-foot tall vinyl fence in the original design.
Oh, okay, because I thought that was just going across the loading zone area in the rear of the building. Is that... Or how, where does the six-foot fence run from and to?
Yeah.
So the fence begins down here at the southern face of the structure. It has a sliding gate. It's going to wrap around the loading area to the rear here and then connect again to the structure with another sliding gate at this point.
And it'll be solid along the back?
Yep, it's a six-foot high vinyl fence. It has the six-inch by six-inch wildlife openings just for conservation and wildlife egress.
What about running like a post and rail fence with a headlight buffer along the middle of it for the rest of the parking area facing towards the back?
The rest of the rear parking lot?
Yeah. Not, we're not looking for a six-foot, you know, big giant fence, because you're not going to be parking trucks over there, right? That's workers and...
I think we're comfortable if that, that could be a condition.
Okay. And I noticed you put in motion, security lights?
Yes, yep, we have, I believe they're dark sky compliant, security lights at the rear of the lot. And we noted in our response letter, I believe there was a question at the last meeting, so those lights won't be used at night. They'll be turned off when operations end at 6:00 PM during normal business hours, normal business days, excuse me.
Well, you give it a half hour after that anyways, because you get people leaving, parking lot and all that. Do we have an idea of what the building's going to look like?
There should have been with, it wasn't this last submission, that was only the civil set, but I believe there was architectural plans submitted that show a rendering of the structure.
All right, yeah, I believe there was the last set.
Okay, I have the last set here.
So, question that I have, you guys talked about a berm, I guess, to the front of the property?
Yeah.
Concern that I have, are you, is that going to turn that into a giant lake when it rains, or is the runoff going to be sufficient enough to prevent that? I just, I'd hate for you guys to have a nice new building and suddenly you're walking in a foot of water.
That's a great question. So we have a high point here at the berm, I believe it says 149.2, so it's going to, any sort of runoff is going to hit that high point, either flow to the parking area, or it's on the other side of the divide, it's going to end up on the Ricketts Pond Drive, closed drainage system. And then we have this great break in here that's going to really promote the sheet flow to go in either direction of it.
Okay, taking it out of the, away from the building?
Yeah, so by adding a couple of high points, we're avoiding any sort of ponding.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And the beefed up landscaping out front's going to include a lot of evergreens so that the sidious trees don't lose their leaves during the winter?
Yep, correct, I believe. We have pin oaks, eastern red buds, red cedars, and white pine trees at the front. And we, so those are from the pollinator species list that UMass had. I believe that was a recommendation a while back from Mr. Bott. And I rotated, like, I switch off with the tree species. I heard at a previous meeting that it's not, not great to put the same species next to each other in case one gets a disease, it can just hop to the next one, so I had that in mind as well.
I see Andy requests a condition to recommend to confirm that Ricketts Pond will remain a private road. We haven't, we haven't heard anything back from the last time we talked to you, so we're going to have to restrict, and you're going to have to put signage up, not a, not a public area, not a public, to keep the public out. Even though you still need the waiver for seven parking spaces in front of the building. It, it's, I'm not, it's not a hard time, it's, you're not allowed to park in front of the building. We are, we can allow up to eight spaces, but that's a waiver. So I noted, I noticed in your response that you removed that waiver. That waiver has to be put back in.
Okay, understood.
We discussed the sidewalk as part of the requirement of the road and not part of your landscaping. And again, we already discussed it, but the parking lot will be closed at nighttime.
Correct.
Questions, comments? Did we add the bike rack in?
Yes, a bike rack was added to the plan. It's on the front face of the building, kind of really in the center of the building, so it's set off the parking area there. It's a, I believe it's a double-sided bicycle rack that should hold 10 bicycles. It's the same that we've been specking for these lots as we're going along.
Is that between the handicap spaces?
I'm thinking this area right here.
Okay, I see a little square there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So be a cement concrete pad that's really of level grade with the sidewalk, and it's a double-sided bicycle rack, so you can lock your bike to it.
It's narrow enough for bikes.
The arrows here are going to be on the pavement, I, right, that's why they're?
Yeah, that's why they're there. We call out just white pavement marking arrows, and I believe we have a detail for that.
And it should be a circular motion, so where the, where the delivery dock is should be a singular direction?
It's, it's all two-way traffic.
Ethan Tarlock's two-way traffic besides this one-way entrance to the rear loading area.
Why wouldn't you make the area in front of the truck delivery spot? Yep.
This area, we have 24 feet in width, which is adequate for two-way traffic.
Unless the truck's pulling out of the loading area, correct?
Yeah, and employees will be advised at delivery time, so they'll, they'll know to be cautious of the parking area.
All right. This, this tree next to the bike rack at the end of the loading area, is there someplace else we can put that or, or work with that so that it's not blocking the bike rack and the first couple space, parking spaces there from view? Or is it, is it a shrub? Is it low? It doesn't give me a call out.
Yeah, that's, that's a red bud tree, so that's going to be a, you know, typical-sized tree. That can be removed or relocated as the board sees fit.
We'd prefer it to be kept down to like under four feet, so if somebody's parked here, they can look over and see if the truck's pulling out, or if there's any issues. Same with the bike. You hop on your bike, you start to pedal, you don't want to run into the truck pulling out or anything like that.
Be adjusting himself. How about we replace that with some additional shrubs?
Yeah, that's, that'd be great, yeah, just something lower, something that won't block the line of sight there.
Have to be maintained if we move.
And then, what was, Andy's was today? And we haven't, have we, we haven't heard anything back from the fire department in regards to the new?
I've, I've no.
Okay, all right. Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, my only question is, what are you using for watering the vegetation, trees and plants, shrubs?
There's currently no sort of irrigation proposed in the plan. I know it's in the Water Resource Protection District, so I'm not sure that's allowed anyways. So I'm sure the property owner will, will maintain any sort of trees and shrubs with, with their own private water supply.
Andy notes he didn't get a copy of the, or doesn't have a copy of the proposed building. And I take it, you got the letter from Andy today that, in regards to the 15% windows, bump outs, awnings, whatever the case may be. All right.
Mr. Jeff?
Yes.
So if the trees and shrubs proposed to be put in do not make it, can we put like some kind of condition on them being replaced in a certain amount of time, like say a year for establishment?
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're requiring them to be put in. We expect them to be there for the length of the building. What timeline then, as opposed to?
Take a year's fair, right?
A season?
Okay.
Winter, spring, fall?
I have a question or a comment or observation. I don't know what exactly to call it here, but it seems you, you want the building and we have these requirements to make it, you know, break it up, make it look, put all the awnings on, make it nice, and then we come along and we go, we want you to completely surround the area and screen it off so we can't see it. I mean...
The parking lot and various other less attractive features are required.
Right.
So the parking lot, the dumpster, the loading areas, those are, those are considered as less attractive.
Right, this is on a private, it's in a development, you know, industrial zone.
It's not a private...
Not a public goes by.
It's not a private road until it's been made a private road, so we have to treat it like we would treat...
It's an isolated location that the general public doesn't go by, and our requirements to make the building as pretty and as nice as we can, and then we say, now, screen it off so you can't see it. I'm just not...
Well, it is...
It just seems to be a doubled expense. Would you want it to look nice and let people see it? You know, want it to look nice, cover it up.
Well...
Just in gen, you know, it's just...
I don't want to disparage any metal building in Carver, but we're not exactly looking at Mount Vernon, so we have the windows and to break up the surface area things, and the landscaping helps both with, you know, carbon sequestration as well as a little aesthetic.
I'm just...
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Yeah, which way do we want to go here?
Provides infiltration, and it also provides windbreaks and shade.
Right.
I mean, we're not building the prison here. All right. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody that would care to comment, speak, or have questions in regards to this? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing for Ricketts Pond Business Park Lot Number Five to August 8, 2023. Meeting Room One, 7:00 PM, Carver Town Hall.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Why are we continuing?
We have to hear back from the fire chief, and Andy's got to double-check and size up the, the water system for fire suppression.
And as I said the last time, as the last applicant, I'll have a draft decision at that point as well, so if we're comfortable with that, we'll have the draft decision. We can walk through that and perhaps close the hearing and vote that night.
Okay. So the motion's on the floor to continue the public hearing to August 8, 2023, Carver Hall, Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room One, 7:00 PM.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Robbins and seconded by Ms. Saradillo. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robbins, an aye.
Ellen Sahilo, aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you for your time. Just a quick question regarding the fence and the landscape change, just that one tree we talked about. Could we condition both of those items just to save expense to the applicant of drawing up new plans and submitting it to the board?
Yeah, that, that's fine, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's, it's not a major structural component, so we're, I think that, that would be not a problem.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of Bridgestone Development Inc. requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 5300 and 2230.C. 2230, 4341 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Lot Number Three, Ricketts Pond Business Park off Spring Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map Lot, Assessors map 32 Lot 1-3. In the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District, SSID, the project will consist of the construction of two light industrial buildings. The lot will be comprised of two approximately 7,452 square foot light industrial buildings with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage systems, systems and utilities. How are we doing?
Good evening, members of the board. Good to see everyone again. My name is Bob Ferguson. On behalf of the applicant, Bridgestone Development. With me is Eric Shoemaker from McKenzie Engineering, who will walk the planning board through some of the changes that we made in light of the feedback that we received, I think it was two weeks ago. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric.
Eric Shoemaker, McKenzie Engineering. So starting with Sheet C1 here, bicycle rack was added adjacent to the northern building, similar to Lot Five. That bicycle rack is a cement concrete pad acting with the sidewalk. It's going to hold 10 bicycles. It's a double-sided bicycle rack. The, moving on to Sheet C2. The 141 and 143 contours were revised at the front landscape buffer. The revisions to the grading is going to provide a berm at that front landscape script, strip to further screen buildings from view of Ricketts Pond Drive. Now, moving on to the landscape plan. Additional tree and shrub plantings were added along the front landscape buffer to both buildings. In total, we added four eastern red bug trees, two red cedar trees, three eastern white pine trees, 22 pussywillow shrubs, and 19 endless summer hydrangeas were added to the front landscape buffer. So that pretty much sums up the changes to the plans. We cannot answer any questions the board may have.
And this is going to use motion-sensitive lighting also, correct?
Double-check. Yes, motion-activated lighting, fixture height will not exceed 11 feet.
Andy's asking you again, size of the windows and the side, building sizing, if you could provide that. The same issues with the private road, it's going to have to be signage out front. Provide parking lot interior landscaping calculation and identify the areas that meet that requirement for Andy?
I believe that was provided in response to comments in the previous letter.
I, I don't have your response to comments, so I just have the letter that he sent today.
Yeah, I typed that out a while ago, months ago for him.
Still at 17?
I believe so.
We discussed his recommendation that there would be no public entrance. Two modern in wells?
Yeah, that, that could be a condition. They're not currently shown in the plan. I believe it's, the engineer wanted to locate them on the site.
One installed in the north, to the northeast of the proposed pavement edge, and one within the infiltration basin number one.
Okay.
Testing criteria and frequency will be discussed and determined by the Board of Health, Concom, and the planning board. Site-specific stormwater pollution prevention plan prior to your building permit?
Correct, yep.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As before, on the prior one, I'd just like to be assured that after a year that all the trees and shrubs that may not make it could be replaced?
Yeah, that, that can be a condition of approval.
Mr. Deion, how do you feel? Questions, comments, concerns?
No. He's pretty good.
Concerns have been addressed for the most part.
I have a draft decision. If you'd like me to run through the conditions with you. I need to get into all six pages of it. The, the draft decision is largely based on the previous decision with the board included in that, the note of the remand from the court, the additional meetings and memorandums that the board has received, including in the initial decision and the revised decision. And those conditions that are noted here is the, prior to the issuance of a building permit, true copy of the recorded decision is registered with Plymouth County Register deed, shall be submitted to the planning board and permitting office. Project needs constructed as approved in the site plan, and other revisions require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. Three, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site. During construction, sedimentation and soil erosion control should be installed, repaired and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during construction, and a roadway apron must be kept split clear. Dust, dirt and debris, a copy of an operation, man, operation and maintenance plan shall be submitted to the town and Fussin' O'Neil prior to the issuance. Dust, dirt, and debris, a copy of an operation and maintenance plan shall be submitted to the town and fussed on Neil prior to the issuance of a building permit. Bike rack for Carver zoning bylaw, Section 3445 is required. Installation of two monitoring wells, one installed at the northeast of the proposed pavement edge and one within the existing, within the infiltration basin number one to verify seasonal high groundwater infiltration rate. And soil texture classification prior to the issuance of a building permit. Six rickets ponds and associated utilities shall be constructed for the entire frontage of Lot Three prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. No public entrance for retail to the proposed buildings. Full cutoff luminaire fixtures with astronomical sensors, timers, and motion sensors will be installed. Provide dimensions for proposed windows so that it can be verified that a minimum of fifteen percent of the front facade is covered with windows and identified for the proposed materials for the building siding. Ten Ricketts Pond Road will maintain a private way and therefore a specific depth of planted buffer from Sections 3231 is not applicable. Eleven, a site-specific stormwater pollution plan, a SWIP, shall be provided to the town planner and F and O prior to the issuance of a building permit. It should be noted that a SWIP for the subdivision has already been prepared by the developer. The project-specific SWIP must address dust control. Twelve, only household quantities of any hazardous material are permitted. Thirteen, per Carver zoning bylaw, Section 313K, separate sign permit applications require renewed signage proposed, including at the site entrance. Fourteen, prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy, any outstanding balance of the review and inspection deposit account shall be paid. B, as-built plans should be submitted to the town's engineering and planning department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection. And C, in accordance with Sections 3180 compliance of the Carver zoning bylaw, the town engineer shall inspect the project to ensure it has been completed in compliance with the approved site planning conditions. Fifteen, dumpster pads shall be burned from any runoff from the dumpster pads shall be contained to the catch basin on-site. Sixteen, a vermin control plan shall be submitted to the Board of Health for the property. Seventeen, during the building permitting phase, review by the health and fire departments of water quality and availability that conducted. And eighteen, that I just penciled in, trees shall remain, trees shall be maintained on-site.
Can we change that to vegetation?
Vegetation and trees.
And trees, sure, yep. Acceptable?
Acceptable.
Over all your, are you concerned, questions?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
This is a public hearing. Do we have any concerns, questions, or comments from the audience? Seeing none. The chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing on the application of Bridgestone Development, Inc., requesting a special permit. Lot Three, Ricketts Pond Business Park in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Gatsky.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Deion. Do we have further questions, comments? Seeing none. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
So the chair will accept a motion to approve the application of Bridgestone Development, Inc., requesting a special permit. Located at Lot Three, Ricketts Pond Business Park in Carver, Mass. in the Spring Street Innovation District. With the conditions as stated.
I will make that said. Motion?
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have any further concerns, questions, or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Deion.
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next order of business. Is this a public hearing? It's the definitive subdivision rescission plan.
We have not closed the hearing for this one.
This was the one that we've voted on prior, correct? Oh, for which one?
So other business have, and Michelle and I looked at this earlier today. It says definitive subdivision recession plan. I think everyone would love to have a recession plan, although we're looking not like having a recession. It's like we're going to have a soft landing, but I think that's extraneous, that word in there. But this was the definitive plan that we have already voted, and I believe we are just signing that tonight, so I've got the draft decisions for that.
Oh, okay, all right. This is not a, we didn't forget to close the public hearing, or we're not just closing up loose ends on this?
You know, if we want to make sure it's dead, we can close it again.
I thought we had, but the chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing on the definitive subdivision, subdivision rescission plan of Route 44 development.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatsky.
Second it.
Seconded by Mr. Deion. Do we have further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Deion.
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Yeah, I could swear we closed it, but might as well cross our Ts and dot our Is.
Yeah, well, I have to tell you, having the rescission plan for Route 44 and the definitive plan at the same time has caused a little confusion for lots of folks.
Are we signing the paper that you gave us?
I have got a copy of here. That's your draft copy to look at, but I've got the original here for signatures.
All right. Preliminary subdivision plan for Fuller Street Carver Solar LLC. The applicant requested a withdrawal without prejudice. I'll read the whole thing. Preliminary subdivision plan, Fuller Street Carver Solar LLC, care of Newco Development Services, 44th Street. Assessors map fifty, lots eight and 10A zoning district. Residential agricultural applicant requested a withdrawal without prejudice. The chair will so accept that motion.
I'll make said motion?
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Preliminary subdivision plan, Northwest Plymouth Street Solar LLC, 204 Plymouth Street. Assessors map forty-eight lot two, six, and seven zoning district. Residential agricultural applicant requested a withdrawal without prejudice. The chair will so accept that motion.
I'll make said motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Our next order of business is appointment of planning board representative to community preservation committee. Ellen's been sitting on the board for us for two years?
Yes, I believe it is.
And done a great job. Are you willing to re-accept the nomination in regards to that?
At this point, considering I have family obligations going on, I would like to suggest that we have Mr. Williams in that place.
Excellent.
And I'll second that.
Well, can, first, I'm not, can we?
The statute requires a member of the planning board. I am fairly certain that it's okay. If it's not, if town council says, tell Mr. Williams, we love him, but I don't think it's an issue. One of the things that is required is for some groups and some committees, a board can appoint someone that says, we'd like this person to serve as our, but the statute says a member of the planning board, and since an associate member is a member of the planning board, it's likely okay. And if it's not, we'll be back in two weeks to do it again.
All right, so the board would request, well, would anybody else care to volunteer for the position? Will you accept the nomination?
You get to give away money. It's, people like you, give the money. Turn on your application there.
We will vote on it conditional on a letter from town council in regards to whether it counts as a member of the planning board or not. All right, so the chair will accept the motion to appoint Mr. Williams as planning board representative to community preservation committee with the approval of town council.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatsky.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. And we have I have draft decision, but it's not on
Yeah.
It's not, it's not in the, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, we noticed that as well.
Okay, so we're going to continue this till August 8th, unfortunately. Our next order of business is town planner notes.
All righty, so we have in our continuing bid to sort of find all the things that have been moved around and missing from various planners and various office moves. The site plan for Ironwood was approved by the planning board, but a copy of the decision, or the copy of the plan was never signed. So I have a copy of the plan. I have referenced a copy of the plan to the decision on the renewal, on the revision dates, and am ninety-seven percent certain, and that's as best I can do this time of night, ninety-seven percent certain, that this is the plan record. So if I can get the board to sign this, they'll make some additional copies for us. They are going to be coming to see us as well. Ironwood is in the midst of selling their development to somebody else. And as a requirement of the zoning bylaw, they will likely be in at the August 8th meeting with their buyer to meet with the planning board and make sure they understand all the conditions that are required to do the development. So we've got the plan that they're trying to sign to finish up their, their closing issues. And then prior to the closing of the property, the applicant will be here on August 8th to make sure they understand fully the conditions that they're buying into.
So they've already sold it?
Well, they can't until the closing.
Well, more or less.
Yeah, they've got a deal.
So our permits have become commodities at this point? Right, once people get permits, it's bought and sold and transferred.
Some people keep them, some people flip them.
Okay. All right, so, and we have subdivision A and A and R training Thursday night at the fire station?
That is Thursday at 6:00 PM, the fire station across the hall. We're very excited to have Alana Quirk do the presentation for us. As I have probably said before, Alana Quirk is a practitioner. She's, in addition to being a planner, she's also an attorney. So she's the person I really wanted to have this discussion, so she can talk about the practical side of things and the legal side of things as well. And so it's, we've got a great instructor to talk about things. She's going to be here. And we've invited our neighbors from neighboring towns as well. So we may have a few folks from some of the neighboring towns to come and sit in on the training session as well.
Mr. Bob, is this mandatory?
It's not mandatory, but it's extremely helpful. We've seen, you know, a lot of discussion about subdivisions and a lot of, you know, and all the stuff that we do is based on state law, and sometimes it's conflicting and sometimes it's difficult to follow and understand. But, you know, nothing's mandatory, but
Well, that conflicts with my personal life. So if it's not mandatory, I apologize that I won't be able to make it.
Will it be filmed?
Nope. CPTC essentially is, we have a contract with them that we're paying them to do this training. So the people who didn't pay for the training don't get to go to the train. So there's no recording.
It's proprietary. Proprietary.
However, if you Google this thing, it's going to show up in a lot of people's minutes in a lot of different towns in a lot of different places. But no, there's no recording.
I have a question, not to get off that subject. Those plans that you've wanted us to sign, when did the board vote on that? I'm just curious.
That was a remand from the court. We did it at the fire station, I believe?
So the board voted on this November 2nd, 2022, November 1, 2022.
I think that was a four to one.
Where is this located?
If that was the remand, then that was a four to one.
I got Shea, Deion, Robinson, Sordillo.
I was just curious.
Yep.
Where is this located, which I mean, it's disturbing names.
Meadow Street, yeah.
Yeah, 223 Meadow Street.
Was it fourteen acres?
Yeah, this was the forested land. It was deforested. Ten acres of it was deforested.
Yeah, we also had a conversation with them about this during the week as well. One of the conditions in the decision was that they were going to make a contribution to a local or regional environmental group. I think that condition specifically states. Condition number two, the abutter voluntarily agreed to provide a monetary donation to a local regional conservation organization to mitigate the tree clearing on the site as a result of the project and show up for the conservation agent and town planner to identify a suitable organization. So I did work with the, to have a discussion with Gary Flattery, our conservation agent. We asked Wildlands Trust, who has a couple of CRs, conservation restrictions they manage for the town of Carver, if they would be interested in a donation, because with, you know, recent stories in the press about people making billion-dollar contributions to buy golf tournaments and things like that, not everybody wants somebody else's money. So we said, here's the plan, here's the decision, here's all the stuff. Are you interested? And they reviewed it, they got back to me and said that'd be fine. So we conveyed it to these folks as well. So they are on record as making the donation, closing up the books on that to make sure that they handle all their obligations on their side of things.
Planning board member notes chairman. Sherpa meeting tomorrow night, training Thursday night. We have our two volunteers for the PPA, PPDs.
We did get that from you as well.
And I think, anybody have any announcements or anything they'd like to discuss?
Yeah, just one quick update. Last meeting, I brought up about legislation for the state. The legislation regarding, the proper number on that is HD 4420 with regards to firearms regulations that, that has been tabled until August. regulations that, that has been tabled until August, when they will take that up again.
Jim, what was that?
It has to do, it has to do with concealed carry firearms regulations, places where you can carry, ways that you can, having to register modifications to firearms and register magazines, and there's a whole lot of, there's a whole lot of stuff going on. It's pretty, it's very, very extensive. It's something like 140 pages of new regulations.
I believe something was sent out to everybody through our mail.
Actually, that was land use legislation from Senator Elders that got sent out to folks. So I have one other announcement as well.
Sure.
On our, on our calendar of dates, sort of a segue from that, is that National Night Out is coming up on August 3rd. This is run by the Carver Fire Department, Police Department, and police departments across Commonwealth, I guess across the country. And so August 3rd is National Night Out. It's going to be at the Carver Middle High School from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. One of the things that's likely going to be there, we're finalizing things tomorrow with the folks at Serpent, but the folks at Serpent are likely going to have a tent there as well to talk about the housing production plan, and to basically talk about some of the services that Serpent provides to the town. So we're trying to, through outreach as much as we can on these sort of operations. Unfortunately, we couldn't quite get it all lined up to make it on Old Home Day, which would be a great take, but they didn't have staff wise to do that. So we'll be at National Night Out to talk about regional planning and housing.
Excellent.
And that is a good point, Mr. Bott. That Old Home Day is Saturday, the 29th.
Oh, is it this Saturday? Good thing you said something.
There's something else coming up at the, there's a fundraiser for cancer patients coming up at Sportsman's Club. I think it's at the end of August. It's cornhole tournament and basket giveaways and stuff like that. So check out the Carver Sportsman's Club website, check out their calendar, and see what date it is. I'm not exactly sure what the, what the exact date is off the top of my head.
Excellent. All right. The chair at this time will accept the motion to approve the minutes of June 27, 2023. Motion made by Ms. Sodillo.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tagatsky. Discussion? Okay, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. We want to thank everybody for joining us, Area 58, and the chair will accept the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Tagatsky.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Excellent. Further discussion? Seeing none.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.